Did you go again?
We have a public hearing on holiday order. It's for the 2022-2023 General Assistance Ordinance Maximals, Appendix A through H. Does anyone have any questions regarding this or want any information on it? Elsa? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Selectmen's meeting will start now. Please join us in the last. Item number two, action on the minute.
So, negative.
All those, all those in favor? Post, thank you. Number three, adjustments to the agenda.
I have nothing.
Item four, public comments. Please state your name and the town that you were from for the record. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Business item number five, 5.1, adoption of general assistance ordinance maxims, Appendixes A through H.
Negative.
Discussion? All those in favor? Post, thank you. Item number 5.2, food pantry update discussion.
All right, so we have some folks from the Food Pantry here that wanted to address the board tonight. You do have in your packets the leases that we discussed, a copy of the letter that I sent to the Food Pantry, you know, information requests that we made and so forth, but maybe it would be okay with the board to just turn it over to the Food Pantry.
I'm Anne Dalloway, who is on the board at the Food Pantry. October 19th, we had our board meeting, annual meeting. This is addressed to the town manager, Sealec persons, and concerned citizens of the town. Due to the cost of the electrical and demands of the Sealec people, we do not deem it feasible to pursue the move to the recreational building. Help in hands, Food Pantry, Board of Directors. Thank you, Adam Gallant, for all of your help.
Any questions or comments from the board? Dan?
Curious as to what demands were...
There was the demands that two people put forward to us in a letter from Mr. Gallant.
What was it? Put the wheels out the way?
They didn't give you a copy of the...
Well, I've got it, but I don't know what your problem is, I guess. You don't want any of the things that we asked of... I thought everything was okay the last meeting, no?
We are a corporation. We set up as a corporation independent of the town. We paid the town rent. We have never had to present the town with any of our financials or the number of people we serve or anything. And that was a little bit more than what the program was set up to be when it was first initiated and then along, up along.
Okay, okay.
You know where you go to.
Just ask, direct it to the board.
Okay. Will they hand you food?
What are you going to do?
We are working on an option.
Something that we discussed on the phone, however, though, just make sure I'm correct, is that you guys are going to continue working out of the 85 Pleasant Street until you, what we say, until about December. You're going to be using some storage space, is that correct?
Yeah.
But we've talked... Yep.
I'm kind of really sorry to hear this.
We're not, oh, sorry, Oxford. We're not closing our doors. We're still going to be working. We will be, but we will still provide a food distribution twice a month, three times a month when it, when the date falls on that calendar.
It'll be the first and third Thursday of the month unless there's an extra Thursday, and then it will be three times a month.
And we provided the calendar to leave at the front desk, or could you... So if somebody calls...
Anyone to call?
Yes. And we will update you on what's happening in December.
Thank you. I'm still on, to be clear, we didn't demand any money from them. We didn't demand that the Food Pantry is going to pay for any portion of the electrical upgrades that we were trying to get quotes for. Their sole objection is that we ask for their financial information.
But Tom, can you deal with it?
I can.
Someone, I'm not, so I can...
She can.
I think it's very well, so I want to make sure she was just hearing what you were saying.
So what we, what we had asked for was, you know, they have a copy of the letter as well, so this letter here, I did provide a copy of the Northlight quote, and I also provided them with copies of the two, of the lease, excuse me, the lease, draft lease. In my understanding, and I think this is what we communicated, is tonight, prior to this news, there was going to be a discussion about how to handle the cost of electrical or not, and what lease options we wanted to explore, so there hasn't been any demands for any money at this point. I thought that was going to be this discussion tonight was going to be on that, so...
So it's basically the financial problem?
Is the request that were made via the letter we sent? Am I saying that correctly?
I couldn't hear you.
Saying it's the request made in the letter that is the issue?
Yes, and also the lease, there were some...
On the lease too.
So you don't want to have a lease?
No, no, there were some things that listed in the, the, one of them was the insurance. We have liability insurance. I don't know if this was a generic, I don't know about the fires, a fire, or up to a million dollars, it said, for Food Pantry, that maybe we have $500 worth of food.
Section 11, insurance and indemnification is what she's referencing.
And also the, if I might say, the electrical, I know it was the only estimate that you got, that's extremely high, with using five-year-old heat pumps, and we have done our homework. The building is uninsulated, am I correct? I had written, I know, I'm trying to see, and the ceiling is missing.
Right, the same piece of ceiling.
So two heat pumps is as your sole source of heat in that kind of an area in a metal building with a cement floor that does have, I'm sure, it's not smooth, and I remember there were some cracks in it, but you're going to be heating the ceiling too. And I did speak to two people who installed these, and they said that the, it would be very inefficient, and the electrical bill would probably run for 500 a month on your coldest months. That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money you could buy food with.
Yes, so the board at our meeting last night, we gave them the facts, very unbiased, and they chose to spend the money on food and distribute it at the distribution center.
Other questions or comments?
Do you have any idea where you want to go to? Because I know there's quite a bit of support in the townspeople.
We have options, and we're looking into those options, but we will, we're not really sure yet. But until December, we know where we are. Thank you.
So, I wasn't going to speak again, but I'm very disappointed that the rumors that were spread by a certain person from your group, I don't see that person here again, rumors and outright lies that we put out to some of the public members blaming the select board for this action. I think we've tried, all of us have tried to work with the Food Pantry. Anything in this packet, the draft leases, were all certainly negotiable, nothing was the final product.
That's right.
So it's disappointing to me...
The person that spread lies from our group, we don't, none of us participated in it.
The lady that was here last week.
She's not any of, had anything to do with it.
I understand, but she had it first heard from her mouth that somebody from the Food Pantry group told her that information. Again, that might be not accurate either, but there was certainly some misinformation put out, and I tried to correct that, right quick in the beginning. Nobody from this board that I know of ever wanted to do away with the Food Pantry. I don't want to see the Food Pantry go away. We, probably all of us here have supported the Food Pantry one way or another, whether it's time or financially. I'm sad to see it go, if it's going away.
Going, why not?
If it's going away. I think we've done as much as we can. I mean, you folks are all taxpayers in Oxford. We have to do what's right for the taxpayers of the town of Oxford.
Thank you for your work.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
5.3, Board of Selectmen with the discussion on the Welchville Dam. Adam?
So, Welchville Dam, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, and I just wanted to, I just wanted to take the time to talk to the board a little bit more about this. We're kind of at the tipping point right now with this project, and what I mean by that is, the next step is to, you know, hold a, hold a public meeting and allow the engineer from VHB to come and brief the board on, on doing the bid packages, you know, to bid out this project and so forth, and talk about the DEP permit that we received, the restrictions and, you know, the criteria of that permit, which I think would be a wise step for us to go. There's been some also discussion about the, whether we remove, whether we replace the dam with a dam or we replace the dam with these berm grade control structures. So before we go through the expense of having VHB here and publicize this as a, you know, for everybody who has interest in the Welchville Dam, first I want to make sure that the board is ready to move forward with exploring, exploring that option, having VHB come and talk to us. And then, secondly, I want to make it clear that this, the congressional funding grant that we, yes, we passed the, the first hurdle, which is the committee vote, but we still haven't had a full vote with the Senate, so we don't have full funding for that piece yet. But it is for replacement of the dam, but specific to the grade control structures as is outlined in the, in the press release and so forth. So I just, if the board is not interested in moving forward with the grade control or exploring that, I'll reach back out to the Senator's office to clarify if we can use the funding for the other option. So that's one thing I'd like to clarify with the board. And then, secondly, are we all on the same page of having VHB come? And if they come and talk to us, you'll see in here, in your packets, that there is a contract to, contract with VHB to move this process to the next step, and that is to oversee, draft and oversee the bid process. The board would again have an opportunity to stop progress or, or, you know, stop the project when we receive the bids and see how much things are going to cost at that point. My recommendation of the board is that we have VHB come, listen to what he has to say, we hit VHB with questions about the DEP grant, what the requirements are, are we going to be required to remove the old dam, can it stay in place and just be wide open, you know, those are kind of questions I think it'd be nice to be able to ask, and then authorize them to move forward at the bid process at that point. So I guess what I'm asking for tonight is, is that what the board wants to do next? And would the board like me to reach out to the Senator's office to see if we can change the purpose of the grant?
You won't be able to change the purpose of the grant. Grant is, just as you wrote it and everything else, to repair, I mean, replace the dam. You can't use the money elsewhere, because I already asked that question. So it's just for the dam. And the other thing is, did you find, did you have a chance to check with anything on DEP to find out if we go with this berm that we have to take the dam out?
I have not gotten clarification on that yet, and I did talk to the gentleman from VHB, and he said he'd be prepared to answer that question when he, when he comes.
No, I thought we are going to have him at least finish out listening to the story on the berm, correct?
Well, and that's where we're at, is that he's done...
I thought we had pretty much decided last time that we'd already paid for it, we might as well hear that. We didn't discuss that, or? We did? Okay.
But in, my concern was, after the last meeting, that we, frankly, that we, we weren't all on the same page, and I wanted to make sure that we had further discussion. I did consult with Sharon about that, and we thought, and we both thought we should have this discussion tonight before we have the gentleman come. Also, I feel like that's going to draw quite a crowd of folks that are interested in the topic, and it might be worth, you know, having a meeting maybe at the rec center where there's a little more space than here right now, so...
Well, I just figured that if we'd already, I mean, we paid to, you know, at least, there's nothing, we can hear this and still not do it, correct? I mean, that's what I was interpreting in the last time.
He can come and we can not sign a contract to move forward, that's correct.
Right, I mean, you know, to compare or at least hear his, you know, what he got to say. I mean, do I think if that's better than the dam? I probably not, but I, you know, would it work? I guess I'm open to at least hearing the story.
I would agree with that, too. I also think it's important that we get clarification from the state on the use of the grant funds. I reread all of that over again on how the grant was presented, and I don't really see in there where it states that that money has to be specifically used to build a new dam based on how it was written. So that's what I'd like to see clarified.
Well, I spoke with the person that works, I mean, in the office, and they said it had to be a dam. We can have her come and speak to us here at the board if you'd like to clarify that, and that's Carleen.
Yeah.
I'd like to see Carleen here as well, because I'm reading what you've read, and page 205, project purpose is replace the failing dam with an alternative engineered structure and remove the existing dam as required by the main DEP.
And that's what is listed in our application.
So, an alternative engineered structure, to me, could mean either the grade controls or, or berms, or potentially a replacement dam as an alternative replacement structure. I don't know how specific they get, that's, that's the exact wording on the purpose.
So maybe if we had her, Carleen, come and tell us exactly what that grant money can be used for, one of those two things, or all of them. And then...
I was going to say, hold it in the bag.
Once, once she tells us in this room if that grant money can be used for A, B, or C, and then the other question I would like to have her answer that same night is, when does she think that money's actually going to be approved and released? So we have that, because we all know that even though grants are approved, sometimes it takes years to get the money. So I would like to have an update on that. And then I would look to see, to have VHB come back and go through the options of how to move forward, once we know what the grant money can be used for.
We also asked questions about, there's at least two other areas in mind that they've done this, grade control.
Mm-hmm.
It's been a few years since they've done that. Some updates.
I asked the gentleman from VHB to be prepared to talk about that and provide some feedback on how that's working in these other communities.
I mean, didn't he give us some numbers or something first time? I mean, what happened or do to call? Somebody down there, like, you know, you might get more information from them than you would, yeah, well, I'm thinking he wants to sell us a berm. Maybe I'm wrong.
So, does the board want Carleen to come at our next meeting and talk about what the grant can actually be used for? And when we can expect to get the money? And would you like to see VHB come the following meeting after that or the same meeting?
We'll see how quickly Carleen can be here. She may not be able to make the next meeting, but...
Okay.
If that works.
All right, in that order, though. Carleen first, then VHB, okay.
Anything else? Okay, so...
That's clear, yep.
5.4, disposition of old fire command vehicle and old police cruisers. Adam?
Sure.
All right, well, it's exciting. The two, two new Dodge Chargers are now set up and on the road over at the police department, and at the fire department, the Tahoe for the command vehicle is also set up and underway as well, so that leaves us with the Expedition and two old Ford Explorers. In your packets, I put together, you know, this is kind of the standard, you know, RFP for selling and disposing of old vehicles, you know, put it out to sealed bids, see what we get for, for offers. But with today's vehicle market, I kind of wanted to see if the board would be interested in trying something new. There's something called municipalbid.com, a lot of municipalities can use this to sell surplus equipment, cars, trucks, all kinds of things. We have the right to reject any and all bids, even if we put them on there, but I was hoping the board might be interested in allowing me to post these on...
What do we get to lose? I bought stuff off their pool.
Have you?
Yeah. I'm not interested in anything that you've got to offer. Is there any cost to the town?
Not to the town. The cost is to the buyer. There's like a buyer's premium.
Buyer's premium.
Yeah.
I mean, that would get it out a little better?
I'm thinking maybe we might get real money for them opposed to not...
What do you get to lose?
Yep. So my follow-up to that is, is usually when these, when these happen, the, when, in reading the material and stuff, when, when the auction is over, the municipality is selling it, then just to, you know, moves forward with the sale. Would you, are you guys comfortable if we go the municipal bid route, if we get reasonable offers that I just move forward with the sale and process it, or do you want me to bring it back for you guys to award?
I'd make the motion that you can do it.
Is that a second call, Dan?
Second.
Discussion on that? All those in favor of that option?
I will report back on how it goes.
Thank you. Six, department, no, I'm sorry, 5.5, approve and sign the municipal valuation return. Adam?
Donna has provided you folks with a, a quick letter on the MBR. I mean, in, in short, real estate is up to 7.8 million. The personal property was down by 3.4 million, and so overall, overall, she's saying other things are, are looking good, but do you have any specific questions that you'd like me to follow up with her on, or?
Can I ask a question? And we had a taxpayer came to assess our property, which has been going on since, you know, this weekend. At what point do we know what the assessment was? Or, I wanted to think, I mean, it's a duty of all accounts, I don't know where they're at.
Everything's supposed to be done and ready for the next commitment. So by, well, by April 1st, or I believe we should, that's when we're going to have everything, it's supposed to be completed, and then they're going to be putting things together for the next commitment over the next couple of months, so I believe they'll be done by April 1st. Because they have to capture that by what's there on April 1st, so...
Thank you. All those in favor? Post, thank you. Six, department head report, Tom Burke, Wendy Freiber.
Well, that would be me.
That's you?
Just an update that the moving and the unpacking went really smooth, really excited about the rebuilding. We've heard just nothing but positive of the residents that came through, which was really good. One of the things that they were, that reacted with a positive was the no steers for the elderly, really with the elderly people, there were just no steer over and over, and we've been hearing that. So that was really good to hear, you know, that, for that, for the elderly. The other thing was that the, a general warm feeling coming in, it was like warm light, the air quality was good, we've been hearing reports of that, so that was good, hearing all these nice comments. So they said they, they liked the look of everything. Some of the residents that were able to do the walkthrough, they really enjoyed it, and they couldn't believe how big it was and spacious it was. The upcoming, the upcoming election, which I'll get to, but they're asking questions if the elections were going to be here this year, they're not, unfortunately, but we're hoping next year we do some renovations and that will be all spread out, so we're excited about that, having it all in one building, right? And speaking about elections, it's in the process, we just want to remind everybody that it is still going to be down to the fire station, we're going to do the same thing down there, so that's a quick reminder. I don't know how many people are going to listen to this. The, the clerks have been really busy with the absentee ballotsing that all coming in and through, so that's been going very smoothly, so I'm getting everybody's absentee ballots and stuff. We do have set up a few tables that, you know, around the corner and everything, so they want to do in-house really quick, so that's good. Let's see, have the ballot clerk update, a little training and everything, and everybody was excited and ready to go with that, and that all went really smoothly, so we're just ready for a lot. So, yeah, I guess that's all I have, unless somebody has any questions, or anything? All right.
Thank you.
There isn't a lot of light out here at night.
That's a good idea.
I mean, yeah. The light in the parking lot down the, don't we own that light in the parking lot at the other building?
In the old, at the old town office? Yeah. I believe we own that light, yeah.
Any way we could transport it up here?
It's pretty dark when you go out, yeah.
I know, yeah. I know there's lights out there, but they are. It's, it's, it's high enough so it's an overall light.
Yeah, I mean, I can look into better lighting out there, see what my, yeah.
I mean, I know it says fire, and if we've got it. I mean, I know when you bought that, for some reason we have the fire, but I don't know. That's something I can, I can think of. And that's nothing to do with you either, but I, you know.
Well, I don't know. I get out there at night, I might trip over a crack.
I, you know, cracks is all news as well.
Number seven, town manager update report.
All right. So a couple more things about the building. I had spoken to, we had spoken to the gentleman who's doing the signs for out front. The sign that we're going to put out front with the, you know, town office and the hours, it's going to look very similar to the ones you see at the town lines on Route 26. And that should be in by the end of next week, which I'm very excited about. It was also mentioned to me about that first entrance when you're coming from Route 26, that it's hard, hard to see, you know, hard to see and get in and out of there. So I talked to Jim from the highway department, he's going to trim back the trees. He's also, we're going to get, he ordered a sign, a metal sign. This is going to say something as simple as, you know, town office entrance or what have, you know, something that draws your attention so that you, you know that that's a access point right there. So those things are being addressed. At the last meeting, or over the course of the last few weeks or what have you, we've been talking about the old eighty-five Pleasant Street, moving forward with that and proceeding forward with putting together an RFP to, you know, get that out, to get that up for sale and so forth, trying another avenue of, you know, trying to sell that potentially. I'm just working with the, working with the town attorney on, on the deed description portion of that, in order to, you know, put it in the sample claim deed. And that's taken a little bit of behind the scenes work. So once I get that squared away, I'll have that published, published, that that's out to the public. And then otherwise than that, things, things seem to be going good. Wendy already talked about voting as a reminder that it's going to be at the fire station. And we are hoping in June that it will happen, happen here, however. That's what I have.
Thank you, Adam. Number eight, selectmen items. Nine, sign warrants, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
Well, that summer was a bit wet, you know. Oh, no. Neither did Summer.
I'll be great.
That's true. Will you come back to say you're gone next year or?
You don't know. My husband does stay with us.
Who did the coffee?
He's a freezer.
Yeah.
It's such a long way to go.
Sales ever expires is like a month. It's within the last thirty days.
Great for the law. It'll be a good time to live for our feet.
And I'm still like a little, I'm still like a.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so.
From Redwell.
No, Tremblay.
Tremblay.
Tremblay. Tremblay, Tremblay.
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 Oh, yeah. Anyway.
Hey, take care. See you next week.
It was, the grant was for eight hundred and fifty.
And so it hasn't been voted on, but it has made it.
The appropriations committee has voted to move forward.
Okay.
But it has to be voted on by the full Senate, so. And that's what we're figuring.
Okay. And that probably won't happen until. This is spelling it wrong, sorry. Okay, yeah, all right, I got that. No, because they, they'll be back in session.
I'm going to give you some air.
Julie noted.
Yep. Thanks.
Probably fine?
Yeah.
No? I know we had to.
And it's kind of how this is going to, I got a man in select.
I don't want a person that's going to read it.
Did you get the?
No, it's just that. Oh, that was, he was reading that through.
Thanks for keeping him under control.
You're welcome.
He's probably much less.
You're good, well?
Yep.
You're good, well?
It's all very nice. Good to hear. Thanks.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Motion to.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We're already done. You want a motion or you're calling it?
Yes, just sign it, yes, you don't call it. I didn't hear anybody motion to do that.
Make a motion and sign twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
All those in favor?
Who?
Who's second?
Both of them, but.
Oh, okay, Scott.
Yeah, pick one.
Motion for adjourned?
That's where he was on.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
So just in that way, my intention is next week to take some vacation time. Got family visiting from out of state, so I was going to try not to be around them, just so you guys are aware. But if you need anything, call my cell phone at any time.
Wouldn't that be, you, you don't want to be around.
Work. Sometimes. Depends on which family, right? Full week.
Take this away.
But I think the whole week's got.
Yeah, mine's Friday.
Enjoy.
Well, I think you deserve a week off instead of being here and there.
I appreciate that.